For today, April nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. So I'd like to begin by reminding everyone to please mute your audio when not speaking, as well as state your name prior to making a comment or motion and second for an action item. We'll begin this evening by asking each commissioner to please respond with a here when I call out their name. Commissioner Doan.
Here.
Commissioner Duggan.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
And Commissioner Lysick.
Here.
Thank you, everybody. Uh, we will now hand it over to our chief executive officer for reports by the CEO and management staff.
Thank you. Good evening. Uh, it's been a whole, not even twenty-four hours. Since we last all gathered, so uh, thank you for uh, all of the time you have to commit to to uh, this, this job that you don't get paid for. Um, or very little, so. Uh, so um, I don't have a whole lot, but um, uh lobbying update, um, I did want to provide. Um, and I don't know how much uh, President Sanders have, how much you've been able to share with the rest of the commissioners. Um, but um, we recently, a couple of weeks ago, went down to Salem. And we spent a day in Salem, meeting with uh legislators. Uh, I can't, I've lost track of the number. Uh, but we met with a number of them, um, including some hallway conversations. Uh, and uh, it all went really well. Um. Way better than what I had anticipated. Um, I knew our ask was a big ask. I was fearing we were going to be getting laughed out of every office, um, or just shoved out. Um, that didn't happen. Uh, to the contrary, what we got was very warm reception and an enormous amount of support. Uh, for our request. So um, you know, they, in fact, at one point, uh, one of the legislators turned to uh, both President Sanders and I in the hallway and said, you guys are the hundred million dollar men. Um, so yeah. That was kind of nice for them to realize that. And uh, she went on to say. Um. Well, Todd was very quick to say, not yet. We don't have the money yet. And and her response was, oh, you're gonna get your money. Um, so that was a nice comment. Um, so but there's, there's months left to play out here. Um, and we'll, we'll see how it goes, but uh, I would say I'm, I'm very encouraged. I, 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 I don't say that lightly. I'm, I'm very encouraged with what we heard and saw there. And um, President Sanders, would you like to add anything to uh, what we did there?
It was a long day. Uh, we did receive a lot of positive responses from people. And the questions weren't along the lines of, what do you mean you're asking for a hundred million dollars again? Um, it was much more like, well, how do you think this will work within the budget? What would be the proper framework to place this? Is it green money? Is it bond money? Um, but again, you know, knocking on wood, not counting any chickens, uh, Tom and I will be heading back down on May fifth. Um, for uh, the lobbying, and I'm sorry, for the lottery bond discussion. Um, so hopefully we'll be able to provide testimony, not just public testimony. And then we're also gonna go down and visit everyone again um, at the end of May, just before kind of the finalization of the budget. So we've got a couple more visits ahead of us uh, down to Salem. Um, we're not going to DC again. Uh, but we'll be going down to Salem a couple more times yet this spring.
Yeah, and I, yeah, that I would, it was all very encouraging. Um, and Todd, you were so gracious not to make a comment about the hole in my suit. Um, so.
Nope.
I have replaced that suit, so uh, uh, twenty, twenty years was a good life for that suit. So twenty, twenty years, that's a good, good run, so.
Where you should be proud is that you can still fit in that suit after twenty years.
I was proud of that. I was like, damn, all right, I'm, I'm, it's still, it's still buttons. And and the buttons aren't screaming when I do, so um. Okay, uh, on to uh, the May second work session. Um, so currently we have nothing scheduled for the May second work session. Um, and so we are recommending canceling that meeting. Um, I don't see a point in holding meetings for the sake of holding a meeting, um, but wanna make sure with uh, the board that you are all comfortable with that. Got it. All right. Thank you. And with that, I am going to turn this show over to our general counsel, Clark Balfour, um, for the department report. Clark?
Okay, hi, everybody. Um, this show, well, yes, this is gonna be not the most stirring show you've ever seen, but here we go. I'm hoping that Sam can advance my slides for me. Thanks, Sam. So legal department report, here it is. Uh, we'll go to the next slide. And talk a little bit about what we're working on, and these are things that we've been working on for a while. So it may seem a little bit repetitive to what you hear from other people, other places, but mission, vision and values continues to be a, a big item that requires uh, input from all of us, including me. So we've got the mission, vision and values things going. Um, Kylie is in the throes of her class compensation study and issues on that arise from time to time. We're beginning to review our HR policies another time to try to uh, tune those up a bit. So you're gonna start seeing or hearing about those sorts of things. Uh, Paul is in the middle of a bond sale that's scheduled for late May, early June. We're working pretty diligently right now on the preliminary official statement, and that's a really important document that you're gonna see very shortly. Uh, because that is, you know, one of those key disclosure documents in any public financing where we set forth, you know, who we are, what we're doing, what we want to use the money for, how it's gonna be repaid. And all those, those material disclosure elements that a bondholder would want to know if they're making a decision on purchasing the bonds. It's really all an outgrowth of the Securities Act of nineteen thirty-four. And uh, and so, you know, this is something that we do with every bond issue, but um, the current one is just about ready. And you're gonna see it pretty quick, and we're gonna ask for some comments from you. Uh, ongoing, we have our TBWD Wilsonville Real Estate Matters. We anticipate talking to you uh, next month in depth about this. Uh, of course, we always have contracts and project administration items. And then to top it all off, this is the great time of the year for the legislative process. So uh, Sam, why don't you roll to the next one? So we're past the midpoint, and that seems to be a winnowing time for many bills. There, there are other winnowing dates that are gonna come up. Uh, but there are many bills that are still in special committee status with ways and means and rules. And as, as Commissioner Fisher would tell us, they have, they have lives of their own, and they will, so who knows? And there could be things that we thought were gone, but maybe have a relating clause that allows some resurrection. So we're gonna continue to monitor these things and, and advise you from time to time where we're coming. And so right now, we've got a few things that we're watching with particular interest. Let's go to the next slide. So these are a few House bills of interest. Obviously, there's a lot more, but these are a few that I thought you might want to hear about. Um, House Bill twenty-six forty-seven is harmful algal blooms. That's Joel Carey's uh, near and dear uh, project right now. What this bill does, twenty-six forty-seven, is it creates uh, a duty on the part of the, of OHA, the Oregon Health Authority, as well as um, DEQ to identify susceptible streams for algal blooms related to drinking water, and then to have programs to try to mitigate and, and otherwise, you know, monitor, mitigate and, and solve those problems. So we're getting, um, I guess, a framework at the state level for two state agencies to work to develop a response plan for these blooms that could affect drinking water providers. You know, and this, I think, is particularly uh, uh, important for us on the Willamette, obviously. But then people over in the Clackamas Basin, you know, this has been a real issue for them for years. Um, House Bill twenty-seven eighteen has to do with replacement of fossil fuel generators with hydrogen fuel generators for critical public facilities, and water facilities are also within that definition of critical public facilities. There's a companion Senate bill, but essentially this is a, a movement toward, uh, you know, climate change response and, and weaning us from fossil fuels. Generators have always been a big issue for us, for anybody in the water business, and so uh, this may, um, this may provide a method to make that transition. And it, it, you know, once again, Tom was talking earlier about funding. Uh, this provides a system of grants for agencies to then tap into to help with that conversion process. Department of Energy is gonna have to develop rules on how grants are applied for, what the criteria are for award, that sort of thing. But it, it's a pretty positive movement to create a fund uh, that, that perhaps we could use or other folks could use to try to make that transition. House Bill twenty-eight oh-five is what we call the handy decision. So this arises out of um, circumstances in Lane County years ago, where the uh, Lane County Commissioners conducted a, conducted a meeting. Um, but they were trying to avoid conducting a meeting. And so what would happen is one commissioner would meet with another commissioner and then have another one out in the hall, and they would sort of have this, this conversation um, that appeared to be deliberations toward a meeting and for all intents and purposes, a meeting. So there was an adverse court decision to the Lane County Commission. This bill essentially extends that kind of reasoning to use of electronic means for those communications. So um, you know, doing serial communications that could be seen to be deliberations toward a decision are going to, to also be included in the umbrella of, of perhaps an improper public meeting. So it's things we've talked about before, but it's things that we have to be careful of. There's a couple other things too in this bill. Number one, um, it's gonna expand the ability of the Oregon Government Ethics Commission to um, enforce meetings laws and give them jurisdiction to enforce meetings laws. It's going to build in a process for how those complaints are made. And, and then finally, there's going to be a, an, a mandatory education program for, according to the bill, all board members to uh, to attend every year, um, so that they can be schooled up on conduct of public meetings, executive sessions, those sorts of things. So it's, I, I think it's a very, um, I'll use the word pointed, that's probably not the right word, very targeted, um, um, process being developed for OGE C to be involved and to, to provide guidance to, to public bodies convening and, and handling meetings. Um, House Bill twenty-eight seventy, that's retainage bonds. So right now, when we have our contracts for construction, we have, uh, we hold back so much for retainage. Over the years, it's become a option for uh, contractors to post bonds and other securities. And in the past, we could, we could allow retainage bonds um, in lieu of actually holding on to the cash. This bill makes it mandatory. So essentially, we have, we always have surety bonds for performance and payments of the entire project. Now this will give contractors the opportunity to post a separate retainage bond with a surety company. And then we would not hold on to the cash that we usually hold on to. We would pay it to them, and then we can realize on the bond if we need to. In my personal opinion, this is not a good thing. Um, you know, bonds are hard to, to collect on. I think that there's a misconception out there that collecting on a bond from a surety company is something that you make a phone call and the money shows up. That is just not the case at all. You always buy a lawsuit trying to collect on a retainage bond, or any bond, a surety bond, performance payment bond. So you know, this is good for a contractor's cash flow. It is not a good thing for us from a public agency perspective, because if we have to realize upon it, we're gonna have a lawsuit of some kind. And what it takes away from us is our flexibility, because often, what is the one thing that helps a contractor get past that final five or ten percent of the work? They want to get that money. And that is the, the best carrot we've ever had. And on top of that, it also provides a fund that you can use. You have a ready-made fund if there's been non-performance. You have a ready-made fund that you can use to, to hire substitute performance by another contractor if, if the one that you have won't come in and finish. So it's, this is good for the contractors. It's not good for us, and, and I'm not really happy to see it. We'll manage somehow, but this is um, this is something that, that we have opposed as public agencies in the past, and it looks like it's gonna go through. The next one, House Bill twenty-nine eighty-four is an interesting one, because it deals with the conversion of commercial structures to residential use, um, essentially to try to hit affordable housing uh, goals or, or other, you know, housing solutions. Well, so what happens here is, what about our SDCs? Normally, when, when um, um, when people convert from or redevelop their property, we'll give them credit for the system development charge that has been paid for, but to the extent that they increase the equivalent dwelling units, then we always have the right to charge for that. This bill says that in this specific circumstance, where we've converted a commercial building to residential, we can do that very thing, only if we have specifically adopted a methodology that deals with this issue prior to December thirty-first of this year. So if this bill passes, we're probably gonna have to take a look at our system development charge ordinance. We may have to make a uh, modification of the ordinance to have a specific section on these types of conversions, and then say how we're going to uh, apply the system development charge, giving credit for what's already there, but then being able to collect if there's, you know, additional demand on the system because of the new residential units created. So um, this is probably something that will pass. I think that we're gonna have to then look at this over the fall and have something in place by December thirty-first. House Bill thirty-ninety-seven is in conduit hydro. So this is what enables you to take a water right, and then within your system, yeah, use um, uh, generating equipment to make some electricity. Um, until a few years ago, everybody thought, well, you can just do it. But the Water Resources Department said, no, 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 that technically is a hydroelectric permit, even though it's in your system. And so what this bill does is solves that and says, number one, you know, we can issue in conduit hydro um, licenses or permits for use of, of electricity generating uh, programs within your water system. But secondly, and this is the more important thing, not just the water right holder is the one eligible to apply. So if you're a wholesale purchaser, like we are from Portland, we could then use Portland Water half facilities that generate electricity in our system and have a permit for that, so that we're fair and square with, with the Water Resources Department. Um, you do require the consent from the holder of the water right, that is a, essentially, it's gonna be a letter consent to the Water Resources Department. But it does provide for flexibility that we've been looking for. This is a bill that uh, was pressed pretty hard by Hillsborough. And so um, I think this is a great fix, and, and we should be happy for the efforts of, you know, the League Oregon City, Special Districts, Oregon Water Utility Council for pressing this one through. Uh, thirty-one twenty-five is the Lewa Ratepayer Assistance Fund. Um, I can never remember what Lewa is other than low-income housing, and then I lose it after that. Um, so what, what we're doing there with that is that we're creating a public drinking water and wastewater ratepayer assistance fund. It's gonna be um, funded through the Housing and Community Services Department. But essentially, it's gonna provide a fund for folks to um, apply for, for ratepayer assistance. So that may be something that is available uh, to us. We don't know what the criteria for that are gonna be yet. You know, rules are gonna have to be developed, but uh, you know, once again, it's another bucket of money that's being created uh, that, that we may be able to find, or, thank you, Paul, Low Income Household Water Assistance Program. Thanks very much. Anyway, um, the, so this, once again, is just another opportunity that we need to monitor and be ready for. The, the final one here in the House is thirty-two oh-five, Pay Equity and Hiring Retention Bonuses. This is near and dear to Kylie's heart. Um, we're, what it says is, is that while we have pay equity rules, um, and we're following them, and this is a big part of our class comp study and all those other things as well. Um, they are, this bill would specifically exempt from that analysis the uh, either the, providing a hiring bonus or providing a retention bonus to employees. So I think that this would clear up a lot of, um, it would clear up a lot of questions that folks have now of, well, how do we, how do we attract employees? How do we retain employees? You know, bonuses are a, a common thing that are used in the, in the private sector. So how do we do it and yet not run afoul of the pay equity things? This, I think, will be a, a, hopefully, it's the final step in solving things, because I think the language is pretty simple, but I'm not really your, your best uh, human resources lawyer. So maybe Kylie might have some thoughts on that. I don't know. Um, if there's something you want to add, you can jump in, but that's okay. Um, I think we just want to keep track of this, because I think it will help us in the long run. At least it'll give us flexibility in, in what we do with our employees. So those are the selected House bills. I've got just a few on the Senate side, so Sam, if you can roll to the next one. I'll try not to make it too painful for you. Um, Senate Bill twenty-three, I put it out there because this is really curious. This is a um, uh, essentially, it's a twenty-three million dollar grant for the city of Carlton to build approximately eleven miles in pipeline to connect to a, to the city of Hillsborough Water System. And I, I think that what it is, I mean, I haven't gotten to this all that deeply, but I think what it is, the city of Hillsborough has an old slow sand filter plant up at the, um, oh, it's up above, is it? Is it Lee Falls? No. Cherry, uh, you know, I think it's Lee Falls, but it's, it's above the Tuolotin a little bit. It's not up as high as, as the Barney, but it's up, upriver on the Tuolotin. Uh, it's been there since the twenties, I think. Haynes Falls. Yeah, I think that is right. Haynes Falls. Um, it's been up there since the twenties. It's a slow sand filter plant. I think it's about five million gallons a day. Slow sand filter plants, as you know, are, are, um, I mean, it's older technology. It typically works with smaller systems. Um, often it doesn't work during high periods of turbidity, but in any event, Hillsborough has this in their system. It runs a pipeline down through Gaston and then through Laurelwood, and then um, along, I mean, close to the Fern Hill Plant. It never is connected into the Fern Hill Plant, and then on to um, uh, Cordelius and, and Hillsborough, at least back in the day. A lot of those, that system has now been changed over to the JWC, obviously, but it's still there, and it still provides some water to some of these smaller communities. Well, I think this is the system that this Carlton grant would allow Carlton to connect to, with Hillsborough's consent, obviously. But, but what it shows is, is that, you know, their, their, uh, one, Hillsborough could get some new customers out of this. But also that, you know, Carlton is looking to try to secure a, at least a secondary source, if not turn this into a primary, because they've had a dam up there along Panther Creek, I think it is, and it has silted in. They've tried to do some rehab work to take it, to lower it, dredge it out, get it back uh, in sink again. But I'm not sure that that's gonna meet their long-term needs. So I, that's why you see them making this move. And, and so, once again, it shows buckets of money being created for water system uh, projects. The Senate Bill one-twenty-four is the companion bill of the hydrogen generators that, that we talked about on the House side. So I mean, there's, it obviously shows there's interest all through the building down there. And so I think we need to keep our eyes on this, as I said earlier. One that could be dangerous for us, um, or maybe inevitable for us is a, is the next word, is, is Senate Bill six-thirty-five. That bill's dead, so it's nothing, at least as far as I know, nothing's gonna happen to that this year, but it is gonna come back. And, and here's, here's the thing. We, we've had, we spent a lot of time talking about right-of-way fees when we're working within cities, cities being able to do that under their home rule powers. Um, but counties have always been prohibited by statute from charging right-of-way fees. Uh, this bill was going to change that. This bill would say that counties could charge for the reasonable cost of, 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 you know, utilities like us, investor-owned utilities locating in the public right-of-way. Obviously, you can imagine with all the uh, the line miles out in eastern Oregon that folks like Pacific Core or others might have, gas companies, you know, PGE, that could be a big bill for them. So they were, they were very intent on trying to turn this back. But I do think that we have to be ready, that at some point, counties are gonna have the same authority essentially as cities, and that they are going to uh, look at this as a way to generate money for use of their rights of way. So on the horizon, it, don't be surprised when you see it again. Senate Bill eight forty-eight, this is a specific provision that deals with indemnity clauses for design professionals. Um, it, it um, essentially does some good definition work in terms of, you know, when the indemnity obligations are going to be owed and to what extent the um, the, the indemnity obligation is going to extend. The bad thing about it is, it says that um, the, it says that the uh, indemnity obligation cannot be realized upon until after the original liability of the case is resolved. So let's, let me just break that down a little bit for you. Let's say that we have a, a claim with a um, with our, with a designer. Um, maybe somebody has alleged, uh, the contractor has alleged that the design was faulty. Um, we would normally say, well, designer, this is on you, you, you defend us. The designer will say, well, I'll tell you what, I'm not gonna be responsible to indemnify you, to cover your fees and costs, all those things, until we've sorted it out on the contractor's claim, and then if uh, it turns out that we're a judge to have done something wrong, then we'll talk to you about the indemnity thing. Well, what that means is, we may have to have a second lawsuit uh, on the indemnity claim to get ourselves reimbursed for what is their fault. You, you know, even though it was, it was technically already adjudicated in the first claim. So I, I don't like this bill. We fought it, uh, but I think that it's, it's going to, it's, it's probably gonna pass. Um, it just means we're gonna have to rewrite our contracts a little bit, and we're gonna have to be ready that anytime we get in a fight with a design professional, it may be a, a two-bite-at-the-apple proposition that could take quite a while. Um, I'm not really thrilled about it, but that's, that's where it's going. The final one doesn't really affect us. The final one is Senate Bill ten seventeen. It's an infrastructure fund for rural cities, which are cities under fifteen thousand people, and as near as I can tell from the definition, outside the metro area. Well, that, that doesn't really affect us too much. I mean, one, we're not a city, and second, uh, we're clearly within the metro area. But this may provide a fund for cities like banks. Uh, maybe North Plains. I'm not sure exactly how the metro boundary goes there, but this may provide a fund to small cities like banks that are looking for water solutions, once again, to have an infrastructure fund that they could use to construct water system improvements. So I just wanted to flag it as, as a possibility, because ultimately, western Washington County is gonna have to have a discussion about how water is gonna be provided. And to the extent that some of these tools can be available for these smaller cities to to interconnect and and do those sorts of things is only going to help that ultimate solution along. So with that, Sam, I think my next slide is questions. And and I will entertain questions if anybody has them.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yeah, Clark, going back to the algae bloom issue. Is there a reason? Have you been able to glean any insights as to why algae blooms became a partisan issue in the committee? And one party voted against algae blooms and one didn't?
That is a brutal question. I I don't have the answer, quite honestly. It that makes absolutely no sense. It floored me, right? I mean, who's not for public health and safety? But but I have to tell you that the ins and outs of that have been followed by Joel Carey. I don't know if Joel's on the call tonight or not. I mean, he was the one that's been monitoring this closer, but no, there's there is absolutely no logical reason on the planet for somebody to say that this is not a good idea.
Yeah, I was sort of taken aback when I started looking over the the bills the other night and I looked at that and I I just was quite shocked. I was like, I was not expecting algae blooms to be partisan controversial.
You know, I guess you know, getting sick is a nonpartisan issue, right? And and yet that's kind of that kind of seems to be where it is. It is very puzzling. Yeah, I wish I knew.
I can also give you a a little more insight on to the low income customer assistance fund that they I've been following this bill with Rep Helm's office. And while they're unsure if they'll get the full amount they requested, they're they're hoping for something. And in exchange, they're trying to figure out what a long term funding solution is. Yeah, because just asking for general funds every session doesn't seem like it'll be a, you know, thing the legislature will like every session. So they're they're hoping to in exchange for some money this time, to find a permanent solution for next session.
I see. So and some of those bills that that we talked about, you know, they earmarked fifteen million or twenty million or twenty three million. I wasn't sure how they arrived at those numbers. And so are those are those placeholder numbers at this point? Is that the best way to describe them?
Some of them could be until, like, some of them, the ones that when they get into Ways and Means, like if they're on their way to Ways and Means, that's like what the I mean, it's like I say, if you're, you know, hedging your bets, you know, you're going to ask for a big number, knowing that Ways and Means is going to come back and say, no, you can't have that much.
I see. Okay. Okay, good.
Clark, this is Jim Downe. Is Richard Burke still the head of the Ethics Commission?
He is on the Ethics Commission. I can't remember if he's the chair or not, but he is on. Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anything in the chat? Or?
Just an Instagram picture.
There you go. Okay. Oh, thank you. Oh, that was a
Looking good.
You know, anytime I see that that's yes, that was a picture from a long time ago at a Blues Club. But anytime you can wear a Hawaiian shirt, you know, it's going to be a good day. So there you go. Anyway, thanks, everybody.
All right. Thank you. And please thank your entire staff for us.
They will. I I took them all out the other night just to celebrate. So thank you.
You're welcome. All right, we'll move on to our next item this evening, which will be reports of meetings attended. And we'll we'll begin with Commissioner Don, please.
Sure. On March eighteenth, there was a Willamette Intake Facilities meeting. On March twenty first, there was a rate advisory committee meeting. There was a Talking Water in Spanish on the the twenty third. The work session on April fourth. J W C pre meeting on the tenth. Budget meeting last night. And today's regular meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Don. Commissioner Duggan?
For April, I have to report on the twenty first of March. We had the RAC meeting number six. On the twenty third, I attended the Talking Waters Spanish webinar. On April fourth, we had our work session where we got the update on mission, vision, values and W W S S. On the sixth, I attended the Willamette Water Supply System Board Meeting. On the tenth, it was a Finance Committee meeting where we got an update on a class comp study and other financial updates. On the eleventh was the Agenda Planning meeting that have each month to plan this meeting with CEO and Board President. On the twelfth, last Wednesday was the Regional Water Providers Consortium Executive Committee Meeting, which is our regular one third of a year meeting. We got an update on staff activities. Probably the biggest thing I I'd like to report is that they're making great progress in translating much of their great emergency management and conservation material into different languages to serve our various communities throughout the metro region. And that that's an ongoing effort to try to get the the largest audience for that information. On the eighteenth, I attended the budget workshop. And then tonight's meeting. That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Duggan. Commissioner Fisher?
Well, I was also at the very last RAC meeting number six. And then I attended our work session. And last week I had the opportunity to attend the Joint Water Commission Barney Wezzarar meeting where we heard presentations on their budgets. And then I attended the budget tour last week. And then we had the budget workshop and then tonight's meeting.
Excellent. Thank you, Commissioner Fisher, for attending the J W C meeting on the behalf of the three of us normally attend, and none of the three of us could make it. So we're we're grateful to that. Commissioner Lysick?
Yeah, before I go, I wanted off of, just to acknowledge Commissioner Fisher, thank you very much. That saved a phone call. I wasn't sure if I would have internet access where I was in New Jersey, and sure enough, there was not high speed internet. So who knew that there were places like that in the world still? As far as my meetings, the on April fourth, the board work session, which has been mentioned on the tenth, the Finance Committee meeting, which committee meeting, which Commissioner Duggan described, and then tonight's board meeting.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Lysick. And for myself, I'll just kind of aggregate these things because it's, we're in desperate need of a government support person here. Out of thirty days, I have twenty one days of activity. Happy to do it, excited to participate in the governance. But it can be, this was a really busy month. So there's meetings with C F M, there's meetings with Tom, there's to Washington, D C and back, there's Salem. There is, I I have to make take a moment and thank Pete Boone. Representative Chai Chi's office contacted me and had questions about one of the bills that was coming up and wanted to have some answers to about our water use and also she wanted some wastewater stuff, but we weren't really to do that. But Pete Pete was the man when it came to to the questions that Representative Chai Chi had. So I just wanted to mention his support there for a second. Thank you, Pete. So we had a meeting with Representative Chai Chi, which is nice because she's now whenever something is curious, she's now reaching out directly to us and asking questions. So that's a good thing. I've been talking a lot with West Slope Water District, making sure yes, making sure that they understand that if they would like some cost estimates that we can provide them. It has been a couple of years. We went through their meeting minutes recently after our after the conference, the S D A O conference, where we met with some of the West Slope folks. And they had asked us, you know, why we hadn't really given them a cost estimate. Or at least they had been sort of kind of somewhat inferred that we hadn't given them cost estimates. So between a couple of the board members and then ultimately I met with their board president last week to make sure that if they want a cost estimate that certainly we could provide them with one. And so just made sure that those communication avenues were open and that everybody was still friendly and on the same page. Other than that, yeah, those those are kind of the things along the monthly board meetings and budget committee workshops and so on and so forth. Lobbying has taken a lot of time this last month. And we're not done with it yet, but hopefully it will pay off for us in fifty dollar a day increments. No, yeah. All right, so that will take care of that. And now we will move on to topics to be raised by commissioners. Do we have any topics to be raised by commissioners before we move into public comment? Yeah, not hearing any. We now will go to public comment. And the public comment time is set aside for persons wishing to address the board on items on the consent agenda and matters not on the agenda. Additional public comment will be invited on agenda items as they are presented. Do we have anybody this evening who would like to comment? I didn't hear there would be any, so that will allow us now to then move on to our first agenda, this item this evening, which is our consent agenda. Consent agenda items are considered to be routine and may be enacted in one motion without separate discussion. Any board members may request that an item be removed by motion for discussion and separate action. Any items requested to be removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion will be considered immediately after the board has approved those items which do not require discussion. This evening, we will be asking for approval of the March fifteenth, twenty twenty three meeting minutes and approval of the April fourth, twenty twenty three work session meeting minutes. And the ratification of Commissioner Fisher as the T V W D representative for the Barney Reservoir Joint Operating Commission and Joint Water Commission for April fourteenth. Do I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented?
This is Jim Downe, so moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Don.
This is Commissioner Duggan, second.
Thank you, Commissioner Duggan. May I ask for a roll call, please, Sam?
Commissioner Don?
Yes.
Commissioner Duggan?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Lysick?
Yes.
And Commissioner Sanders?
Yes, fantastic. The motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen. We'll now move on to our next agenda item, which is the this evening's business agenda. And we are going to hear the comparator agencies for compensation research by Kylie, and I dare anyone to say that seven times fast because I comparator agencies for compensation research. And with that, I I hand it off to the person who I understand has Crocs with spikes and heels on them. So I'd like to see those one day.
I will, I will wear them and I'll have, I might wear them next time I see you because I wear them a lot.
I don't have my Crocs on, but I got great respect.
All right, so brief update for the board this evening and also a request for a motion to approve the comparator agencies as presented. And I'll go ahead and just talk through a little bit about our project status so far, so the board's aware of what we've been working on and what we have yet to do. So complete, we've kicked off this project and prepared a bunch of those items that are listed next to that. I'm not going to read my slide for you. We've also presented our compensation philosophy. That was the last time I addressed the board on this topic. We'll be bringing that back to the board at the conclusion of this project with some minor updates to that document, mostly to align with our mission, vision and values. We've also made steady progress on our classification study, including analyzing our jobs at T V W D and doing an analysis on work of comparable character. That is our pay equity analysis. So we have made a ton of progress there and are complete with that part of our project. In progress, I referenced the comp philosophy once again, because we'll be bringing that back to the board when the project completes. I anticipate that will be in August. So you'll likely hear that in August or September. We are in progress on our classification study to update the structure of our classifications and to update all of our job descriptions, which is a lengthy ordeal. But we will get that done. And the part of the project that most employees are deeply interested in is the compensation study, which is what I bring to the board this evening with our comparator agencies. So we need to determine our comparator agencies. We need to also select our benchmark jobs, collect data, and then obtain recommendations from our consultant on our compensation structure and our pay policies. And then we will receive a final report at the end of the project. So that's a little bit about where we are. So for comparator agencies, there are guidelines to best choose a comparator agency. We look toward agencies that are in similar industries, so we are recommending that we stick to water utilities. Though some water utilities also provide power utility as well. Similar sized agencies, and that can be kind of difficult, especially in the world of districts and local government. So we'll do our best and think that we've presented a list that has a number that are close in size to us. Similar jobs is one of the biggest biggest pieces of this. We want to find an organization as a comparator that has jobs like we have at T V W D. We also look toward regional location. And we can look outside of our area here, which is what we recommend doing a little bit of with our list of comparators. But it is a little tricky if we have a lot of comparators that are far away because we need to manipulate that compensation data to account for cost of living and cost of living and cost of labor discrepancies between different parts of the country. We also look at competitors for talent. Who are we competing with when we recruit for filling positions? Who do we lose employees to when they seek employment elsewhere? And then availability of compensation data. This isn't the most important piece, but it is really helpful if that data is available online. Many public agencies use a similar software program to what we use and post that information online, and it's very easy to find. There are others that do not. So being able to find data is really, really helpful. And most of our comparators fall under that category as well. So as such, we recommend using seven primary comparator agencies as listed on the slide. Portland, Beaverton, Hillsborough, Clean Water Services, Eugene Water and Electric Board, Clark Public Utilities and Denver Water. And then a list of secondary comparator agencies. If we're not able to find sufficient compensation data or job matches with our first seven. So we would also look toward San Antonio Water System, the Tacoma Public Utilities and East Bay Municipal Utility District. I note on the slide that we may also look to published salary survey data. That won't be used as the meat of our compensation analysis. We are focusing on using in comparator data. But it may be helpful, especially for jobs that are found widely in the marketplace. I think of jobs like in our finance department, H R, I T. It's a good kind of gut check to see where we're at in those published salary It's a good, um, kind of gut check to see where we're at in those published, uh, salary surveys. We may also look to those. Um, I have one more slide, uh, to talk about benchmark jobs, just to inform the board of the process for that. Before I move on, are there any questions about the comparator agencies presented? Doesn't sound like there are. Alright. Um, so benchmark jobs is also something that we are working on and we've, uh, created a list of what we recommend as staff to use for benchmark jobs and our consultant is reviewing that and, and letting us know if that will work for our project. When selecting a benchmark job, we want to find jobs where we have a high employee count. We have a lot of meter readers. We have a lot of, um, waterworks operators on a variety of crews. We have a lot of customer service, um, representatives or customer service assistants. And those are jobs that we definitely want to look at, because we've got a lot of people in those positions. We also want to look at jobs that are common in the marketplace, so finance, HR and IT are the big ones. Um, but in the water utility industry, there's a lot more that could be very common as well. We want to look at jobs that we've had a hard time filling. Um, not to toot the horn of our HR team, but we've had a pretty great time filling positions, so we don't have too many of those, um, that we're worried about. We want to look at key strategic roles as well. That's often a leadership team or an executive management team role. And one thing we want to avoid is unique jobs that aren't found elsewhere. Um, in the HR world, we call those unicorn jobs sometimes. And they're often positions where someone has kind of added on job duties, um, just based on their own skillset and interests, and they've essentially created a job that isn't found anywhere else. Those are really hard to find comparators for, so we're not going to be looking for positions like that. So we're, we're finalizing our list of benchmark jobs and we'll begin the data collection once the board's approved the recommended comparator agencies. Um, and I anticipate this part of the project will take probably four to six weeks, um, maybe a little bit longer. It's a lot of data analysis and, um, we got to let our consultant take that part on. Um, so hopefully we'll have that done shortly and then can, um, report back on what we find. Um, so with that, are there any questions from the board about comparator agencies or benchmark jobs? Or anything else about the project? Okay, well, with that, in the staff report, um, we did recommend that, uh, the board consider approving this list. So I would turn this back over to you, Commissioner Sanders.
Thank you, Kylie. Uh, and that, then I will ask, can we have a motion and a second to approve the list of recommended comparator agencies as was just provided in the staff report?
This is Commissioner Lysick, so moved.
You, Commissioner Lysick?
This is-
Commissioner Fisher, I second.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. I'd like to ask our district recorder to please provide the roll call vote.
Commissioner Downe?
Yes.
Commissioner Duggan?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Lysick?
Yes.
And Commissioner Sanders?
Yes. Thank you, everyone. The motion passes. Thank you, Kylie, for your work. And now we will move on to our next agenda item in the business agenda, which is adoption of the district's mission and values statements. And we will receive the staff report today from Paul Matthews. Paul?
Oops. Uh, that, that would, that, that would be me.
That would be, change that. Scratch that. Tom Hickman.
Thank you, uh, much, much appreciated. And, and if you don't mind, I'm going to take advantage of, of having the mic here for a moment. And, and I just wanted to say thank you to Commissioner Sanders for all that effort you have put forth in all the lobbying. We as staff can do groundwork, but I can tell you it makes a world of difference when we have a commissioner sitting there in front of another elected official. Um, and I, I think it has made a big, big difference. So I just want to thank you for that time and having to hang out with me that much. Um, the only other person I know that's willing to tolerate me that much is my wife. So, um, thank you for doing that. I, I really sincerely appreciate it. Um, alright, uh, so on with our mission, vision and values. So, uh, this is another one we've made a lot of progress on, um, but some reminders here. Um, why do this? Why are we refreshing, uh, the TD, TVWD's mission, vision and values? Um, well, as, if you remember always back, you know, our, our vision should be inspirational. It should be, uh, really future, future focused, and it really needs to be memorable. So, um, something that's terribly wordy, um, usually not a good vision statement. So something that is succinct and, and really conveys the message of, hey, where are we going? Um, and so that, that's, that was one of the critical tasks we took on early on. Um, and then now we're combining that vision work with the values. And that's, those are the words that set the standard against, um, how our actions can be assessed. So, um, that's, that's how we get the work done. And then the mission is what we do today, every day, and who we do it for and how we do it. Uh, and setting these and, and, uh, refreshing these every so often i- is really actually quite important for staff. Um, so that people are aware of this is who we are. This is our culture. So, um, beyond what we think as staff, beyond even what the board thinks, um, we also realize we have a community we serve and, and the population that we serve. And, um, they, they have an expectation of us as well, which is that we have a social responsibility. Um, and I think the board is very aware of this responsibility, but we, we have a responsibility to the people that we serve. Um, and, and a responsibility that we do this, um, and with an equitable mindset, um, recognizing the differences and, uh, that we all bring and, um, being very respectful about all that. And then we also have a responsibility to the planet. And, and that we do things that, um, are sustainable. So with all that in mind, uh, we have been embarking for months now on this. And, um, I believe what we've come up with, uh, what we, what we'll be presenting here tonight, um, I really believe it captures what's uniquely TVWD. Uh, it shares TVWD's commitment to reliability and service of excellence. That was something that came out loud and clear that's of importance. Um, it clarifies priorities to, uh, make sure that we're using our resources and our time for the right things. Uh, it reflects our, uh, friendly culture. Um, that is a big attract, uh, attraction to working here. Um, job enjoyment with opportunities to grow. Uh, that's an important thing for our staff and, um, for retaining staff. Uh, it acknowledges the district's leadership, evolving regional role and responsibilities. And I can tell you, we are getting recognized regionally, uh, more and more, um, as, as having a, a significant leadership role. Um, and we, we want, we want the, the region to be aware of that. Um, it sets the expectations for our workforce that reflects the diversity of the community we serve. Um, so this is something that we, you know, we do have our DEI work that is going on. Um, and so that DEI work has to land within this mission, vision and values, and we believe we've now got a place for it to land. Um, and then it provides a shared vision for a future guided by decades of successful service. And, um, that is also something we want to build on the work that's been done, the, the road that's got us to here. We want to, we want to build on that road. Um, we don't want to ignore our history. And, and I believe what we've come up with captures all of this. Hard to do in very few words, um, and get, uh, the majority to agree with. So how did we do it? Well, this was done through a lot of collaboration. Um, in September through December of twenty twenty-two, uh, we, uh, did a lot of stakeholder interviews. Um, we, we did a lot of surveys with staff, um, a number of meetings. Um, and then including, uh, a meeting with the rate advisory committee. Um, and then ultimately that led to the board adopting, uh, our new vision uh, at the end of the year, which we rolled out at the beginning of this year. Uh, January through April of this year, um, we focused on the mission and, and values. Um, again, we're, did surveys, did focus groups, um, did a number of meetings, uh, internal with staff, um, to develop, um, some consensus. Uh, and then also a work session, um, with the board. And that, uh, we also, through this entire period, we've been doing newsletters and, and pulse surveys to get, uh, feedback from staff and, and, uh, and from the board as well as, um, community. So, here's where we landed. So, our mission, what we do every day, reliable, resilient and safe water. It is short, memorable, very clear. Uh, there are no ambiguous words like the best, the greatest. Um, because those are very, those are hard to measure. This is all stuff that we do every day and we're very committed to it. Our vision, uh, as you know, our water sustains thriving communities every day for everyone. And, um, we do that without exception. And we, we are constantly looking, um, to assist any community in the region um, that needs water. If we can do it, we, we will offer to do it. And, uh, I think that's builds on a long history of TVWD. Um, and that's where we're going, is this regional concept. Uh, our values, uh, we do our work with respect. Respect for the work, respect for the people, uh, and, and respect for our board um, and respect for the community that we serve. Um, we do our work with integrity. Uh, this is something that was loud and clear from all staff that this was important, that we, we do all of our work and we behave with integrity. Um, so we hold ourselves accountable. Um, we, we hold each other accountable. And, um, this is something that I, I'm a passionate believer in is, is integrity. You, you, with integrity, you can get a lot done. Um, and then one of the big things, and, and for me, this was something that came out really loud and clear from all staff. And for me, this really meant a lot to me, is how much of our staff believe in the concept of service. Um, uh, I, I, I call it a service heart. Um, but doing, working for the public, if you don't have that mindset of service, um, it's a tough job. And, and, uh, so much of our staff, uh, really believes in the concept of service to the public. Um, and, and, uh, it is one of our core values. And lastly, but certainly not least, is equity. And this is, um, something that not only did our staff recognize, I believe the board recognizes, uh, is important. Um, but also our community that we serve, um, recognizes how important this is. Um, and, uh, the, we, we not only have to do our work with equity, we have, we have to respect the differences that people bring to the table. And, um, that is all something that, um, we believe in. Now, if you look at, uh, our values, uh, to, we, uh, you know, in the water world, we like acronyms. Um, especially for engineers, we like acronyms. And so, um, uh, so we use the word rise. Um, and, uh, you know, what I personally like about that is the word rise, it, it's a command. Um, it's not, uh, it's not a request. It is, it is something we do. We rise to the occasion, occasion. We, we rise to the challenge. Um, and, you know, oh, having worked here now for a few years, I, I can tell you, I see our staff do this on a regular basis. When we have an emergency main break, those kinds of things, line break, the commitment of staff that immediately step up to the challenge, it's, it's really impressive. So, um, that is, uh, our new mission, vision and values. Um, and at this point, what I would like to do is if there's any discussion the board would like to have around this, um, I would like to open the door for that and, and see what, what comments we have from the board. I will use the Dave Kraska rule. I, you know, this is going to be a made, I've been thinking about this, that the Dave Kraska rule is going to become legendary, you know? Um, hey. So, seeing that, uh, there is no discussion, um, I, one of the things that I would like to do actually before I move forward. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Downe.
I was just going to say, uh, this is Jim Downe. I was going to say, I think they're great. Uh, and I think we can live with all of these. And I think if the ones we aren't there yet, we can strive to get there. So, uh, let's go for it.
Excellent. Um, there are, uh, I, I don't want to take all the credit here for this, because it certainly wasn't, uh, all me, or frankly, even much of me. I, I got to, I got to play on the edges of all this as it moved forward. Part of that was, um, intentional, because I, I, this needs to have the staff's fingerprints on it. Um, so there's real ownership in it and, and not just mine. Um, so, uh, but to, to help us get that done, um, our consultants really helped with that. So I'd like to invite on here, uh, both Jenna and Libby. Um, and Jenna and Libby, is there anything to what I presented here that either of you would like to add or say?
Tom, I don't, I don't have anything to add. Just, it's been such a pleasure to, um, work with TVWD and your staff and your board and everybody. It was, um, just a great, a great crew you have there.
Yeah, I would echo that and, um, just, you know, say thanks to everyone for the level of participation as well. That made the process of identifying what is uniquely TVWD, both today and in a long-term sense, fun to do and easy to do, because you do have an organization that has a real identity to it.
Well, thank you both for your help and your time as you, it, because I know sometimes it's been like herding cats. Um, so I, I really appreciate all your efforts to help us get to here. Um, so where are we going? Uh, our next steps, so tonight, we're asking for the adoption of the new mission, vision and val- values. Um, we'll be rolling this out after the adoption to all staff formally. Uh, they're certainly aware of this, but it will become a formal rollout. Um, on June first, we'll be doing an external launch of, of this, uh, so that we, the public sees this. Um, our partners see this and that they're all, uh, aware of that. Um, and then make sure that we're, um, actually making sure that this all gets captured in our practices, um, in our assets, in the media, um, and all of our materials that we provide. And from there, what we do is this becomes integrated into our strategic planning framework, which is the next step. Um, and, uh, that's where all of this lands. This, the, the, they are, I should say, that the strategic plan then helps us make sure that we're living our mission, vision and values. Um, it's where we are, we are measuring against, um, to say, yeah, are we making advancements here on these things? Um, and then, uh, we'll look at, uh, as I mentioned, the metrics. Um, and, uh, we'll also implement and operationalize all of this. So just so you know, we'll, we'll actually be taking the mission, vision and values. This will now become part of our performance criteria that we measure staff. Um, so all staff will be- Um, so all staff will be measured against, you know, how well are they doing on helping us live our mission, vision and values? Um, and, and that uh really integrates this into the, into the culture uh of TVWD. And then of course, we always will continue to monitor and look to improve. Um, so we don't, uh, I think as Commissioner Dome uh pointed out here, we, we don't do this and then put it on a shelf. Um, this is something we keep looking at, keep doing, can we do better? Um, what else do we need to do? Uh, so that uh will be an ongoing uh pro- process. So with that, uh, so I mentioned the June first, um, and then the kickoff of 2023 for the strategic planning framework. Uh, I will just put in a, a little uh hit here for uh our CFO, Paul Matthews. He is the most excited about the strategic planning. Well, he likes to think he's the most excited, but um actually I am too. But this, the part he's been waiting for is the strategic planning uh framework. And, and so I'm very excited as well um for that to kick off. And we now have a real place for it to, to be measured against. So our, we're to look at what we're doing. All right, so our recommendation for tonight is to adopt resolution five dash twenty-three. Uh, revising the mission and value statement for Twalton Valley Water District.
I couldn't said it better myself. Can I get a motion and a second, please?
This is Commissioner Duggan, so moved.
This is Jim Dome, second.
Thank you. District Recorder, may we please provide a roll call vote?
Commissioner Dome?
Yes.
Commissioner Duggan?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Lysick?
Yes.
And Commissioner Sanders?
Yes, thank you. The motion passes. Congratulations to everybody. Thank you once again to our outstanding uh contractors who've helped us with this project. It does look really good from the, from the new logo all the way through to our mission, values and vision statements. Um, the organization has a very refreshed and uh exciting um set of uh logos and public presence now. And I think we're very grateful to everybody's effort um in doing this. So thank you once again. All right, uh, we'll move on now to our next item C this evening, which is the Washington County Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan. Again, say that seven times fast. Um, I don't think we can, but um we have uh Nick and Kevin Sutherland are going to be making our presentation this evening. I don't know who wants to go first, but please be free.
That's going to be Nick.
All right, good evening, uh, President Sanders, Commissioners. Uh, it's our pleasure to present tonight the 2023 Washington County Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan. And uh really this has been a, a real collaborative effort over the last uh little over a year in development. And uh, so we thought we'd, we'd continue that collaborative effort and, and uh uh, both Kevin and I will, will present, Kevin will take the, the first few slides and, and talk about some of the key concepts in the background. And, and I'll finish out with uh some of our mitigation action plans and some of the additional benefits we gain from having this plan in place.
Okay, Sam, next uh slide, please. Uh, next slide. So good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity for Nick and I to present this. And um as we're talking about the key concepts tonight, um, we would like to point it. Uh, one second, I'm sorry, someone came to my door.
That's what happens when we work from home.
Uh, the Natural Hazard uh Mitigation Plan uh overall identifies hazards, vulnerabilities and risks facing us and our community partners. And as we work through that, we prioritize action uh to reduce risks. And the plan has two parts, a risk assessment and then mitigation strategy, uh, which is broken down into uh action plans, which Nick mentioned. Uh, the plan is on a five-year cycle. This is actually our first uh official adoption. Uh, last time we went through the plan, we worked on it with all of our community partners. Uh, and we participated, but we didn't actually uh get, develop an annex. Uh, I want to point out that we did work uh as Twalton Valley Water District as the managing agency for uh the WWSS uh and included them as an inclusive part of our plan. Uh, and then you can read the other uh bullet points there. And Sam, if you can go to the next slide. And then as Nick pointed out, this is truly uh a very collaborative effort. And I want to point out that we really use the whole community concept as we move through the plan. And we had really uh a lot of focus on collaborative efforts. Some of the things that you're going to see uh that Nick presented uh will be as a result of those collaborations. And I think that as we went through this and worked with IEM, uh, our consultants in Washington County as the lead agency, we really worked very closely with the city of Hillsboro, Beaverton, Washington County Clean Water Services and Twalton Hills Park and Rec. And the document will be a living document for the next five years. And the document um that we produced went through the state, uh Oregon Emergency Management and FEMA without any substantial changes. So the plan we submitted went through um in a very quality uh product that we did. And it's exceptional um that the plan went through for the whole county uh without any big changes. So um key point will be eligible for federal mitigation funds. And then I'll turn it over to Nick who's got the uh bulk of the presentation. Thank you.
All right, next, next slide. So a little more background into what is a, a natural hazard mitigation plan. Uh, basically it takes all of our natural hazards from uh dam failures, drought, uh earthquakes, heat, flooding, landslide, everything that's shown up there and, and looks at uh how that applies to our infrastructure and, and, uh, so as part of this process, we went through, we identified all these hazards, identified all our vul- vulnerability and uh the probability of these events happening. And then, and that also includes the history, you know, when, when have we had a, a dam failure? So if, if you can kind of see that on the screen, that's the first one, history, low. Uh, but probability could be high. If we get a seismic event, uh, there's possibility of, of a dam failing. Uh, so each one of those, we, we had to go through and identify the, the severity and come up with a score. And then those, uh, the scoring criteria, we're able to apply to, to different scenarios and, and try to identify our highest risks within the district. Uh, so next slide. And with those uh high risks, uh, we had to prioritize and, and rank which actions we might take. And uh these mitigation action plans, uh, there, there's a lot of uh difference between them. That you could have infrastructure upgrades. Uh, so for, for example, uh, the Taylor's Ferry Reservoir Project, uh, that's an infrastructure upgrade. Uh, to up, upgrade our reservoirs to a, a seismically sound reservoir site. Um, other things included partnership with regional agencies. Um, eh, last year, I think in May last year, we had an interdependency, infrastructure, independency workshop where we brought in uh multiple different agencies uh from the county to uh uh PGE, uh Northwest Natural Gas and a nu- number of different uh agencies that we all depend on each other. Uh, if, if we have a seismic event and a road uh goes out uh because of that and we can't access some of our infrastructure, that becomes a problem. So uh trying to understand these, these interdependencies was a key part of this. And, and it, that's one of the mitigation plans is to continue that effort to hold those workshops and, and come up with plans to really identify where our critical infrastructure is and how we can best work together. Um, some additional action plans included uh customer collaboration uh with, with critical and key customers and uh looking to, looking for communication upgrades uh to assist during disasters. Uh, and why this is important, uh, if we'll go to the next slide. Kevin mentioned it a little bit is, is a natural hazard mitigation plan needs to be in place to be able to access uh FEMA hazard mitigation funding. Um, so in, in 2021, we actually had an opportunity to, to look at uh some grant funding uh for our Taylor's Ferry uh reservoir project. And FEMA funding uh can pay up to seventy-five percent of the, of the costs of a project. And we were successful in obtaining that. However, we still didn't have our natural hazard mitigation plan in place. So now with, with being able to put this plan in place, uh, our, our funding uh for that project will be able to go through. Um, and that, that's to the tune of uh about twelve million dollars that, that we'll be accessing through FEMA funds. Um, the goo- good thing, uh, there's no obligation to proceed with any of these projects that we list as far as the mitigation actions that we got to take. Um, the, they're, they're there if we can get the staff availability and, and if we can find the, the right funding mechanism, uh, we can proceed with those. Um, and then the, the plan, like Kevin mentioned, it's, it's a li- living, breathing document. If we need to add more to it, we can do an amendment. Um, we got to maintain it on a five-year schedule, so we're looking at this fairly regularly. Um, and then one, once it's adopted, uh, we'll be able to look at some next steps uh with different mitigation action plans and evaluate additional funding opportunities to, to um be able to mitigate from, from these natural hazards. And I think uh there's just one more, more slide. If, if there's any questions, I can go ahead and take those.
All right, well, seeing no questions, uh, we'll uh turn it back over uh to uh the board for board action.
Great, thank you, Nick. Uh, at this time then, I'd like to request a motion and a second for um adopting a resolution zero six dash two three uh, um, which would allow approval of the 2023 Washington County Multi-Jurisdictional Nash Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan. That's a lot, that's a mouthful.
Uh, this is Commissioner Fisher, so moved.
This is Jim Dome, uh, second, as long as I don't have to repeat the wording.
Indeed, thank you, Commissioner Fisher, and thank you, Commissioner Dome. Um, District Recorder, may we please provide a roll call vote?
Commissioner Dome?
Yes.
Commissioner Duggan?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Lysick?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanders?
Yes, thank you, everyone. The motion passes. Thank you, Nick, um, and um thank you, Kevin. And with that, I believe that is our last agenda item this evening. So we will uh formally uh gavel out and adjourn this meeting. And if we can stop our recording.